All right. Good evening. Welcome, everybody, to the regular session of the September tenth, two thousand and fourteen School Committee Meeting. All members are present. Linda? Our first order of business is the items for approval. Superintendent Delai?
Yes, there are seven items tonight for consideration on the consent agenda. They include approval of minutes from the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen regular session, the acceptance of a donation for the Shawshene Elementary School from the PAC, award of a contract for the Washington DC field trip. This is for, uh, the field trip bid. This is for the middle school. And then you have four separate items for warrants as well.
Thank you. If we put together numbers one, two, three, four, and seven, everyone can vote on those. Okay? So I'll have a motion to accept those four items, those one, two, three, four, five items. Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Barnish. All those in favor? Unanimous. Then we have warrants for payroll eight twenty-seven, two thousand and fourteen. Could we have a motion for those? Mr. Mullis?
Motion to approve warrants for payroll eight twenty-seven, fourteen.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. Mr. Bjork. All those in favor? Five in favor. All those who abstain? Two abstain, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Thank you, Linda. And the last one is warrants food service one A and food service two. Could we have a motion for those?
So moved.
Mrs. Oh, thank you. And do we have a second? Mrs. Barnish. All those in favor? Six in favor and abstain? One abstain, Mrs. Carroll. Best one we've done. It must be because you're all here to help. Thank you. All right. Mr. Delai?
Yes. First item on our superintendent's report is the welcome of our new staff. This is exciting. This is definitely exciting for me as a new superintendent, as one of the new staff here at Wilmington Public Schools. We actually are introducing today sixteen new teachers, one reading specialist, one library and media specialist, one board-certified behavior analyst, one special ed curriculum team leader, one special ed team chair, an early childhood center director, a middle school assistant principal, and a middle school interim principal. So I'm gonna actually kick us off and introduce our two, two of our new administrators, and then I will ask each one of the principals from the schools who have new staff to come forward and introduce their new staff to the school committee.
That sounds great. Thank you.
And when we're all done with that part, you're all dismissed. How about that?
They can stay if they like, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So I'd like to actually start by introducing to you Mr. Ralph Olson. Ralph is the interim middle school principal at Wilmington Middle School, and Ralph has his bachelor's degree from Northeastern and a master's degree in Framingham State. He has thirty-three years of experience as an administrator, including having worked as principal in North Middlesex Regional School District, Ashland Public Schools, Waymouth Public Schools, Framingham Public Schools, and Sharon Public Schools. He's also served as an interim administrator in districts such as Fall River, Neshoba Regional, Freetown, Lakeville, and most recently as interim principal at Murdoch High School in Winchon. We're very fortunate to have him, I feel very fortunate to have his experience and his expertise. He's making a great impression at the middle school to start off the year, especially with his four Rs.
Respect, responsibility, resiliency, and results. That embodies what we're all about this year. But it's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to be identified as a rookie.
And secondly, I'd like to introduce to you our new assistant principal at Wilmington Middle School, and that's Dan O'Brien. Dan has his bachelor's degree in history from Norwich University and a master's in education from UMass Lowell. He was most recently assistant principal at the Lakeville Junior High School in Drakett. Prior to that, he served seven years as a grade-seven social studies teacher at the Lakeville Junior High School. He is a great addition to a very well-rounded team, administrative team at Wilmington Middle School, and a good balance to our interim principal.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the welcome. I appreciate it. It's been a great opening to the school year. Thank you.
Good to have you. All right. I'm now gonna ask Mary Hood to come forward, and we've got some district-wide special education staff that she would like to introduce.
I want to introduce two district-wide special education staff. The first is Jennifer Charette, and she is our board-certified behavior analyst, where she received her master's degree in that from Simmons College and comes directly from an educational consulting firm, and we are thrilled to have her on board. The second person I'd like to introduce tonight is Dan Miller. Dan is our new special education team chairperson, and he came to us from a program at Belmont Middle School where he was the behavior specialist. And he may look familiar to some people as he taught in Wilmington for several years and is a return act, so we're thrilled to have them both as part of our district-wide special education team.
Welcome.
Welcome, thanks.
And I would now, let's see, Linda, Linda Peters, if you could come up and introduce the high school, which I think is our largest contingent of new staff here tonight.
I'll just call them up one at a time.
Sounds good.
First, we have Carolyn Athens, special education teacher. Carolyn has a master's in special ed from Regis College, and she comes to us from Maynard High School, where she was a special ed teacher. Adam Dilaria. Adam is an English teacher at the high school. He has a bachelor of arts in English with a minor in secondary education from Regis College. He is a, came from being a student teacher at Framingham High School.
I tried to run away.
And taught at the Weston Middle School.
Nice, welcome.
Leeann Ebert. Leeann is a former student of mine. Leeann is the special education curriculum team leader. She has a master's of education in educational administration from UMass Lowell. She is a graduate of Wilmington High School, and she has been a long-term sub with special education Wilmington Public Schools and also at the Reading Public Schools.
Can we just also add that where Leeann just came from?
Just now.
Just now.
The field.
The field. First field hockey win.
She's a, oh, a win. Excellent, yes. That was so good of you, Leeann, from school to field hockey to us. That was nice.
Next on my list, I have Paul Gleason. Paul is a new business teacher at Wilmington High School. He has a master of business administration in international business from Salem University, and he comes to us from Newton Public Schools, where he was a high school business teacher.
Good, welcome.
Kara Kerwin. Kara is a special education teacher in our alternative program. She has a master of education in special education, moderate disabilities, from Pittsburgh State College, and a bachelor of arts in English literature with a minor in economics. She comes to us from Burlington High School, where she was a special education teacher.
Nice, welcome.
Brenda McConalogue. Brenda is also a former student of mine, a graduate of Wilmington High School. She's a math teacher. She has a master of business administration from Bentley College and has worked in Wilmington for the past twelve years as a math tutor, helping us students prepare for MCAS, and she also teaches in our SAT prep class.
There you go.
Stephanie Murray. Stephanie is also a math teacher. She's a point-six math teacher. She has a bachelor in mathematics and secondary education from Keene State College, and she worked with Mr. Ralph Olson at Murdoch High School last year as a student teacher. Sandra Noack. Sandra is a Spanish teacher at Wilmington High School. She has a master of education in applied linguistics with a minor in ESL. She has a master of science in education and technology with a minor in media and design from Full Sail University. She was a long-term sub at Wilmington several years ago and coming to us from Parker Middle School as a long-term sub in grade eight. Welcome, Sandra.
Welcome.
And I have Dominique, Dorian, I'm sorry, Dorian, hope excuse me. Dorian is a French teacher, point-four French teacher at Wilmington High School. He has a master of arts in English and French and a master of arts in linguistics from San Diego State University. He comes to us from Locke Middle School in Borica, where he was a French teacher.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And let's see, Alice Yang. Alice is a science teacher. She teaches physics and chemistry at the high school. She has a master in secondary science education and in chemistry from New York University, and she comes to us from teaching at Chelsea High School. And we have one other. I don't know, I don't think she's here. Christine Kuchar, who came to us to take over physical education health teacher. She has a master of education in athletic administration from Springfield College, and she comes to us from the Vanum Brook and Ashbury Elementary School in Lawrence, where she was a physical education teacher. That's it.
Thank you. And next up, we'll have the Wilmington Middle School. Mr. Ralph Olson will introduce his staff.
We'll minus a couple of people tonight, but at the same time, Shannon Keely, if you'd come up, please. Shannon is one of the favorite students of an awful lot of teachers in Wilmington. She is a product of Wilmington, and she attended and graduated from Emmanuel College in Boston. She teaches literary circles for us and has a number of students motivated and ready to go on reading, and she and Brandy Danner are setting up a type of challenge for the students this year in terms of, you can mention it.
Oh, sure. So if our students' school-wide at the middle school read seven hundred and fifty thousand pages, that includes books they read for their English class, any reading classes or pleasure reading, we will dye our hair a funny color by April vacation, if they can do it.
I'm not, I'm not involved in that at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have here Andrew Kalala. Andrew is a seventh-grade math teacher. Andrew is a graduate of Natick High School. I had an opportunity to watch him as principal when I was at Framingham High School, but I was on the other side of the field. Andrew went on to, excuse me?
We won.
No, you couldn't have won. Andrew is a graduate of Merrimack College, and he's also taught math at Salem for a while, and he brings a nice expertise and will be a great addition to the department that we have here. He also abandoned his wife tonight, who is actually due to deliver a baby on Tuesday. You better get out of here.
This is like a vacation.
Wow, he can go.
The three people that are not with us this evening, Brandy Danner, who is our librarian that most of you are familiar with, had the job at the town library down here and is transitioning nicely over at the middle school. Brandy has her own child's open house tonight, so she's not here. We have Crystal O'Keefe, who is teaching in the Strides Program with some of our challenge students that we have there. Crystal is doing a nice job. She actually worked a little while at North Middlesex as well, and unfortunately, well, fortunately, she gave birth to a baby girl just before she took on this job, and her baby girl is a little ill tonight, so she's staying home. Let's see, the last person. Who am I missing? This is a test.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Music.
He failed the test.
Music.
We have, let's see.
Jennifer Perkins.
Hmm?
Jennifer Perkins.
Jennifer Perkins, yes. We had a last-minute resignation in our music program, and we were very fortunate enough to discover Jennifer Perkins, who had been teaching with Dan, actually, over in Drakett. And he recommended to us, and we were able to get her on board. She is a graduate of a northern school affiliated with SUNY, New York City Colleges, and she has a nice background in music. She's actively involved in musicals. She plays, I believe, in the Nashua Symphony. She is a cellist specialist, and we've connected her with our strings lady as well. She's teaching chorus and general music at the middle school right now. She's also been very active in musicals as well, so those are new people.
Thank you. And next, we'll have Lisa King, who is the interim principal at the Shawshene and Boutwell Schools. No stranger to Wilmington.
So I, Kelly McEwen unfortunately is not here right now, but I can tell you a little bit about Kelly. She has her bachelor's from Merrimack College in business administration and marketing, and we were really fortunate to have Kelly on board last year as a Merrimack fellow. And so she was in the fellowship program for a whole year in a second-grade classroom, and she also received her master's in elementary and education that year. So she's our new third-grade teacher, and we're really excited to have her.
Thank you.
Hopefully you'll be able to meet her. If anybody comes by the building, I'll take you up to her room.
Thank you.
And Christine McMiniman, the principal from the North Intermediate School.
We welcomed two wonderful educators to our building at the North this year, and we have Margaret Bolt, Maggie Bolt. She is our new fifth-grade classroom teacher over here, and she's coming to us sort of through the West Intermediate, because she did a long-term substituting stint at the West last year, and she did her full student teaching practicum in the Reading Public Schools, and she will be completing her master's in special education, moderate disabilities, this winter. And we also have Tracy Marino, who is our reading specialist at the North Intermediate, and she is coming to us from the Salem Public Schools, where she's worked both as a reading specialist at Witchcraft Heights and also as a literacy coach for the district. So she's going to bring an awful lot of resources to us at the North Intermediate for our students to support them. So, welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. And I think last, certainly not least, Mr. Jeff Straznick, who is the principal at the Woburn Street and Wildwood Early Childhood Centers.
We have two wonderful people that I'd like to introduce. First, at the Woburn Street School, Tiffany Pimental. She taught at the Mystic Valley Regional Charter School last year in first grade, received her degree from Gordon College. And I don't think I ever told her, but when we first put this posting out there, we had over four hundred and fifty applicants, so out of four hundred and fifty applicants, we found Tiffany, and we're very lucky to have her. At the Wildwood Early Childhood Center, we have Charlotte Phillips. Ms. Phillips, most recently, was an integrated preschool teacher in Groton Dunstable and also a lead teacher, and she received her degree from Wheelock College, so we're very fortunate to have Ms. Phillips with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all our new staff.
That's all our new staff. Congratulations. This is one of our favorite nights of the year, and we want you to know that we're very grateful for you to spend your time in Wilmington. We're very excited about education in Wilmington, and we're very, we really focus on our children. That's our primary focus as a school committee and as an administrative team, and we're so thrilled when we hear the backgrounds that you bring to us, and we try to make things as easy as possible for you, and everybody here is approachable, so please just keep that in mind and have a fabulous year. We understand that it's hard to give up a night, especially in the beginning, and we appreciate everything you did to get here tonight, and we'll be waiting to hear what Andrew has for a baby that, but I hate to tell you now. So thank you so much, and feel free to, you can go along now. Thank you so much.
I'm Jake. You can stay if you want.
I know, that's your line, isn't it?
They have homework.
Okay.
All right.
Our next item for business would be the superintendent's report, number two. Mr. Delai?
Yes. In your packet, we have included a personnel report. Certainly don't need to go through the entire personnel report, but just to summarize, and the report includes that we had twenty-two retirements and twenty resignations. Twenty-two, I think you all, I think I was at that meeting where you congratulated, so that's a large number of retirements and twenty resignations last year. We are almost fully staffed. We still are in the process of, we still have an open position for the math curriculum team leader. We are in the process of finalizing the hire of an HR administrator, and we have a speech-language pathology assistant that we're also hiring. This is in place of what would usually be a contract services, and it's Mary's belief that we can save ourselves a good amount of money by going the assistant way, the, yeah, speech pathology assistant route.
Excellent. Mrs. Burns?
I just had a quick question with regards to the information that we receive regarding the personnel, and thank you for responding so promptly with regards to the details that we're historically most familiar with. Is it possible with, and I appreciate the integrity with staffing, personal information not being disclosed publicly, but is it possible that with regards to the aggregated numbers that we get for leave of absences, retirements, resignations, if it can be broken down by school and/or department, just to give us an idea where these changes affect in our district?
Absolutely. Yes. We'll get that to you. Yep.
I know, is this, you want it more than?
Just kind of lump, lumps of how many, like, leaves of, leave of absences in retirement.
The middle school, for instance?
Yeah.
Not too detailed, but an idea as to where the possible impact could be, because it could have, especially if retirements or resignations occur mid-year, that could potentially affect the budget. And so, and just kind of let us, you know, if there's a shift going on, you know, that's one of the reasons why I just inquired for that detail piece.
Yeah, absolutely. The next item, I'm sorry, I should, any more questions? The next item is the enrollment report. You have here a memo, and Mr. Rogiro pulled together the enrollment numbers. I think that overall, our class sizes are in good shape. We do have sort of some, I guess, some hotspots or areas of concern, particularly the Wildwood Kindergarten and Woburn Street, grade one, although we have some grade-one and three numbers at both schools that are, that have two or more classes that are over the twenty, but just by a student or two. So we keep our eye on that, but overall, I think our class sizes are in good shape relative to class size guidelines.
Mrs. Burns?
Could I ask you just a quick, general question? There's no concerns behind it, but I'd be interested in your perspective. I noticed, as you're aware, that in the West, the fourth grade, the numbers are kind of pushing close to twenty-five, one over. We have a class of twenty, twenty, a class of twenty. My question is, at what point, and I'm not gonna hold you to anything black and white, but at what point would you consider creating another class? What would, like, a generality, what would be fiscally reasonable, number-wise, to put that expense in creating another class?
A couple of things I would say, just that some of, some of these numbers, and you notice that under the special education column, there are no students listed, and the way that Mr. Shaw typically assigns folks to homeroom, not all of these children that are in these numbers are in the class the entire, entire time, they're not fully included. There's a portion of the time that they're pulled out, but he assigns them to a homeroom, and these, these particular numbers for the West are based on the homeroom assignment. That's not necessarily broken out to special education. So just, just-
Well, there's two in special ed in the fourth, I'm just referring to fourth grade. Oh, excuse me, no, you're right.
Yeah, so they're, they're assigned in, and these are the homeroom numbers, so that's, that's not necessarily accurate, but I think one of the things that typically we would look at in terms of breaking out the classes, classes as well, is that, I mean, I think you wanna balance the class sizes between schools, obviously, you know, if you were to, you wanna look at whether you have the classroom space. Being so new to the district, I'm not aware of exactly, you know, what they have for extra classrooms, if they have extra classrooms, but I think the class size guidelines being at, at twenty-five for the, so if you have one student more, I mean, I think that the first thing that we would look at, if you had an increase to, say, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, might be more of, can we put a tutor or an assistant in the classroom to be able to assist the teacher in providing some breakout instruction?
As opposed to creating another classroom that might, oh, then I'm saying another classroom of, like, twenty to twenty-three, you know what I mean? You could, because, I mean, I'm just, that's what I, my, I just didn't know what you're, I'm thinking, and that, you know, kind of might have caught you off guard with that, but with differentiated learners in a classroom, too. I don't know, it very well could, and I'm just speculating.
Yeah.
If an assistant would be sufficient enough to be able to capture all those different learners, I mean, you know, the larger, we've been, I think, very fortunate, we've had private school numbers for so long, and I know we've seen a big boost to some of our class sizes, especially last year, and my concern is just making sure, and with everything that's coming down the pipeline, that everyone is able to access what they need to, and I was just really generally wondering that, you know, and I know the expense of creating a new classroom, too, where hypothetically, you would, what range, I mean, I'm sure there are a variety of different factors to look at besides, you know, space and things like that.
Exactly. Space balancing, is there, what is the classroom? What are the class sizes? I mean, if you created six classes at the fourth-grade level at West, you would be looking at six classes of twenty students. When you look across town to the north, you've got six classes, and again, those also range twenty-four, twenty-five, so, you know, you kind of have to balance. If you're going to create class sizes of twenty in the fourth grade at the West, I think you'd have to look at, you're gonna do the same thing over the north, which-
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, and balance that out.
So you would, you would perhaps look into, then, see, transporting students to another school to balance the numbers, per se, before looking to create a, another classroom at a particular part of town?
Yeah, and actually, what my point was, is that if, if you were to create classes of twenty at the West, then you'd probably have to try and do a similar thing for the classes at the North. So right now, the North, for example, has six classes, six fourth-grade classes ranging from twenty-one to twenty-five, nothing at twenty, and so-
But you only have seventeen students, so it wouldn't be, I'm thinking twenty as being a, and granted, I may be lowballing, because that may be private school numbers, I'm not familiar, but I wouldn't create a classroom for seventeen students, which would be, the way I'm looking at it, you know, you're thinking of classrooms of twenty, that would only be seventeen, wouldn't be necessarily, I think, fiscally feasible at that range, but I didn't know if, like, if you had, if you were balancing at a particular school, and if you, say, use the number twenty, I just took twenty because I find that to be reasonable in my perspective, and you could create another class of twenty or more, you know, twenty-two, something that kind of low-twenty range, with, I was kind of just, I wasn't, I was kind of curious if that would be something you'd consider possibly looking into opening up a classroom, or if the first focus would be seeing what the numbers on the other side of town were, and maybe switching students just to balance out the number.
Can I just add something here that Mr. Delai probably doesn't know, but this is where we were told last year to be watching these numbers because of that horrible word, redistricting. And that, that's what we were told, that it might-
I was gonna say something, I was gonna bring that up.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
No, well, you beat me to the punch, but I was gonna, and you kind of brought it up when you were saying whether these numbers are being impacted by what we had talked about last year, where more people moving into one side of the town more than the other. So you kind of beat me to the punch, say that. I don't know what, if they are impacted by that, and at what point do we start talking about redistricting?
Or, yeah.
So that's, that's something we, we need to keep a close eye on.
Yeah, so I, I think my, what I was trying to get at was, you have class sizes at the West and class sizes in the North at grade four are very similar. You have class sizes ranging, you know, twenty-two, twenty-one, all the way up to twenty-five. If you were to create a sixth class at the West and thereby have six classes of twenty, I think the question would be asked, why wouldn't you create a seventh class at the North, so then you would have seven classes of twenty there? That's, I guess, what we have to be sensitive to, that we wouldn't wanna create a situation where one side of town, you've got fourth-grade classes that are at twenty, whereas the other side of town, you're still at twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five. If, if it was a situation where it was grossly imbalanced, where the students were, there was a high level of twenty-fours, twenty-fives at one level, but it was lower at the other, one of the options that could be looked at would be to be, to do what was called spot redistricting, where the school committee would give the superintendent essentially the authority to reassign students based on certain criteria, like, you wouldn't wanna reassign a student if they already had a sibling in that school, but if they were just coming to that school, it was their first experience, perhaps you shift them, and again, you'd wanna make sure that it was within reasonable proximity to that school. So that's a solution that has been done, but in your case, you know, in Wilmington's case, the fourth grade at both schools, they're both at about the same level overall.
So generally speaking, if, let's say, we had a surge like we did last year with kindergarteners, take third grade, just as a, a grade. If we had, let's say, twenty additional fourth, third graders come in, which put the established classroom sizes to high twenties- If we had, let's say, 20 additional fourth, third graders come in, which put the established classroom sizes to high twenties, and let's say the other side is similar in numbers, I was just trying to get a perspective, like, at what point, taking the redistricting piece off, since that seems to be the most, the first thing to look at, what would, what would you consider number of students to be worth the money to invest in creating a classroom, generally speaking? Not related to anything here, but.
I, my first, the first thing that I would look to would be what you have contractually, what your contractual responsibility is to your teachers. And your, the contract with the teachers says that at the intermediate and middle school levels, 25 is their sort of recommended level.
Right.
Right, so I think that's your, your first and foremost determinant is, are you in conformance with what you have said to teachers? Is what, you know, is the guideline or recommended number? So that would be the first place I would look. If the school committee, if we all decided, hey, we would like to establish as a goal that fourth grade class sizes should be even lower than 25, I would say the next thing to look at is, you can create class sizes of 20 at one intermediate level, but you just want to make sure that you're doing the same for the other. So, you know, you, if you, if we all agree that 20 is the number, I think you would be wanting to make sure you had sufficient resources to be able to invest in two teachers, one for each, and that you had, and that you had the classroom space capacity in those schools.
Mr. Bier?
I was just saying, for the sake of parity on both sides of town.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anyone have any questions? I have a question, if I'm reading this, I don't know if I'm reading this right or not. Botwell and Wildwood, if I'm reading this right, we're down 80 students? Last year, all of a sudden, we were up like 80 students or something.
I think what happened.
Oh, Mr. Rogiro. You're shaking his head somewhere.
Year to year, FY14 to 15, the Botwell, you're down 25 students, in the Wildwood, down 48. On the document that you're looking at in the far right column, I think it says FY14. You can see the difference. When you look at it year to year, you kind of see, like, the Botwell kindergarten kids would end up at the Shawshank first, last year, would be at the Shawshank first grade this year.
So that definitely is, would affect, that's why I think the idea of redistricting, when we look down at that, that number, how last year it was the opposite, this year it's, I don't know how we would even think about redistricting at this point, because it, to me, it's not a thing to talk about, to think, we can talk about, but not to think about seriously doing, because the numbers right now are just, don't seem to be that stable to me.
Yeah, I think you're, you know, pre-K and K enrollment, I mean, I think K enrollment, you've got full day kindergarten, so you've probably got, I would imagine you have the majority of the kindergarten students, pre-K is obviously going to fluctuate based on your space, but, you know, when you look, a lot of this is just driven by, by, by your census. It's where kids are and what side of town they are, and it's, it's very difficult, and it is unbalanced. You can have these enrollment fluctuations like this, absolutely.
Right.
Which is why I think some, in some cases, a, a type of spot redistricting policy can make sense, so that instead of just drawing whole new lines, you're just shifting folks, you know, that are near the, near the current lines from one to another to balance that off.
Right. Any, any other? This is an interesting, something to keep our eyes on for sure. Thank you.
And the last report is athletic summer camps, and actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Rogiro to summarize that. Mr. Rogiro?
Thank you. This past summer, the athletic department ran their summer camps. Six, this is the sixth year that we've done it, we ran 10 different camps, starting on June 23rd. The revenue brought in from the camps was a little over $65,000, profit of about $27,000 for the athletic department. We had 386 participants this year. As compared to last year, we're up about 27 participants, and profit was up about $5,000. And as we, when we first came to the school committee back six years ago to start these things, these summer camps, we thought the, the money raised would help to supplement the athletic department budget, and it has. For instance, we were able to buy some things with the new turf field, you can't use, I'll say a javelin as an example. The old javelin has a point in it, you can't throw that on the new turf field, so we bought special javelin that can be used on the turf field. So things like that, that we can purchase that. So rather, while we keep the athletic department budget somewhat flat, we supplement it with the revenues that we earn from the summer camps.
Anyone have any comments?
I'll just make a quick comment. My child has attended, this was her third summer she attended, fabulous program, absolutely fabulous. It's affordable, it's fun, they learn a lot, I'd love to see it continue on and on.
I think Eddie Harrison and the coaches and his assistant, Kevin Wallace, they do a great job. Kids really, really enjoy it.
Absolutely.
My son worked at it, so, and he has attended for his whole school year. But my question is, so that's a lot of money, $27,000, so what else do they, do they do with it?
Yeah, I mean, some, they might buy some certain uniforms, like a track team, we bought something for them last year. I think Eddie purchased a wireless mic for the PA system over in the field. There's some special hurdles that he purchased that are used for, can be used in PE as well as by the athletic teams and so forth, and whatever comes up that he has some, some money to, to use to, you know, to supplement the budget.
Mrs. Brusad, I have to say, my grandson goes to it, and I have to give a ditto to everything you said. It shocks me that they're gone for hours, and it's almost, he's always seemed to hit one of the hottest weeks of the, of the summer. Still loves it, and can't wait to go back the next day. So the coaches and the, whoever's running this program is doing a really nice job, so we, we think it must have been Mr. Bonish. So the congratulations from the school committee to all of them, they've done a really nice job. I think that.
Close my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next thing we're going to do under all business is review the subcommittee assignments. On our subcommittees, down at the bottom, school committee, negotiations, subcommittee, cafeteria, we're going to cross that one out. We'll get this fixed and redone afterwards, because that's, that's done as of tonight. We have the superintendent's subcommittee for the superintendent's evaluation, and Mrs. Brusad has offered to be on that, and I would be on that myself, and I don't know, we don't know if there's a third person. Oh, okay. All right. I'm not sure, we better check that.
Yeah, I can check that.
I don't, yeah, I don't think so. I'm just thinking that, that probably not.
Yeah, as an employee of the district.
Yeah, I think we'd have to.
So can we not be able to participate in the evaluation process?
I don't think so. We'll check, we'll check on that, but I'm thinking.
That part will, yeah, I'll definitely check on that one.
I've always had, though.
Yeah.
I've always had.
Yeah, she has.
I've always done.
I think that part's fine, but I think being, let's check on that.
Yeah, I will.
Does somebody else want, Steve will do it too, so, we'll check on it, and if you can do it, then we'll ask Steve if he'd mind doing the, well, I was going to even do both, but that's all right. We're going to redo the school, well, not, we're going to add to it and clarify at the school committee handbook, plus our protocols. So I don't know if there's anybody, MJ agreed to do that one, and I could do that one too, unless we have two other people. I didn't hear from anyone else, so I thought we probably didn't, we could, can we do it with just two of us on the school, on the committee?
Yeah, I don't, I think that you have a minimum number.
All right, so then MJ and I will, and if anyone wants to come aboard at any time, we can just do that, okay? All right, and I don't think there's any other, oh, just looking at the other subcommittee assignments, we had just done this at the end of last year, so is everybody still happy with this, or does anyone want to make a change? Perfect, okay. This is good. Thank you so much. All right, and the high school and middle school handbooks?
Yes, on these items, what, I know, I believe I was at the meeting when you actually approved the second, the two secondary handbooks, and I remember at that time, and I think Mr. Waugh was actually here, and there was a discussion that the language, you were approving it, but there would be a language, adjusts minor language changes to reflect the new student discipline law. What we've included here, and we didn't want to kill too many trees, so we've just included the pages where the language has been changed, but we just wanted to make sure you were, got to see the language changes that occurred as a result of the new student discipline law. Don't know that you need to revote the handbook, because I think you did that, you acknowledged that in your original vote, but we wanted to make sure you had the updated language. The new handbooks with this updated language are now posted on our website.
This is a change, so it may require, excuse me, for a second. It is a change to the handbook that we voted on, so perhaps it might need to, because it is an addendum of sorts. I don't know, though.
Totally, your coffee feel like you want to be frozen.
Could I ask you a question, though, too? Was there an additional piece of language added on to the disciplinary law? I thought there was an addendum to it, I may be mistaken. I just saw something on the MASC website when they were talking about creating the policy in anticipation for this law. I didn't know if there was an addendum to what initially was put out. I may be wrong.
Yeah, I'm not aware there of any changes come up subsequent.
All right, no worries, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions on that? I have a couple of questions. The teachers providing educational services, it says where additional educational services, if their students are on, outside of school placement. First of all, I'm thinking, we don't have a lot of kids who'll be in this situation. I'm thinking positively, that we're not going to have, I, I don't think we ever have had that many, if, if at all.
Terms of suspensions beyond the 10 days or expulsions. Yeah, I don't, I think, I don't think the number is very high, I don't know the exact number offhand.
And we have to offer them education.
That's true.
So do we, do we, in the past, when students were out ill or had long-term illnesses, their own teachers came and helped, or were substitutes, or we had substitutes, do we have anything in place for who's going to give this educational, or are we going to wait and see what?
Yeah, well, we've, what we're working on right now is, and we discussed this over the summer during some of the administrative retreat time that we had together, each school has to do what's called a school-wide education service plan, and that sort of gives options to a parent. Actually, it says you, the law says you only have to have one option, but then when you read it, it says options plural, so it kind of begs the question if they have a choice or not. So what the principals at the secondary level are working on, because it's not really an issue at the elementary level, but at the secondary level, they are working on a plan to provide Saturday school to students. And they could use that both as a disciplinary measure, but they could also use that as a way to provide that alternative education to students who might be disciplined for longer than the 10 days. So that's what they're looking at now, as well as potentially tutoring. So they're formulating those school-wide education plans right now. We're actually working to get some templates, working, kind of communicating with other districts in our, our school council to determine exactly what that needs to look like, but that's what we've discussed, is providing in, you know, of course, Paul was involved with those discussions as well, in terms of what the financial impacts would be, but we've scoped out a plan as to what that would look like. And the thought being that certainly Saturday school may also be a good deterrent to future disciplinary incidents.
That'll be interesting. In the past, the parents had to sign it, the kids had to sign it and send it back. Now that we put it online, first of all, are we sure, what do we do for parents who don't have a computer?
Yep, so anybody who doesn't have a computer, we've told them to contact the main office, and we will provide to them everything that they need in paper copy, not to go directly to the teacher, but to go to the main office, so that it's handled directly by the main office. I'm not, I have no sense of whether or not that's happened or not, but in terms of the, the sign-off, the way that it's been done right now, it's a check-off or a sign-off through the Aspen process, I'm sure some of you folks have been through it, yeah.
Okay, good, all right. So then they know, and then they can check on the other kids who don't, haven't signed off and see if they have computers or don't have.
Right, right, if a certain amount of time goes by, I'm sure they'll reach out to the parents and see if there's just, if there's a log-on issue, or if they need it provided to them by another means.
Right. And one more while we're here. This probably is not the right place to be doing this. So, wait a minute, let's go to the next, I just want to ask about a committee, I should have already done that. Is, is the bullying committee still in effect? Do we know that?
Yeah.
Because we had, MJ was, was our representative to it, and then never, I don't think there was actually. Oh, and Kathleen, excuse me, Kathleen and MJ were our representatives, and I don't think they ever, did you ever get to one of them? Did they still?
I think I went to one.
The way to one in the past two years, but the last one was because it's snow, it was canceled from one day to two days later at the last minute, and I couldn't attend because I had work.
And I think I did that one, I think I attended that one.
But do you know where, do we know where it stands, is it still a viable committee, or do we need to revamp that?
Brought up alone, excuse me.
Sorry.
I, I spoke with Principal McMiniman just last week, she was the chair of the committee, and she planned to reconvene and have a meeting sometime before the end of, of the month.
Oh, okay.
So you should be hearing from her shortly, I'll follow up with her tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
And we are, it's, it's my understanding from those conversations that the school committee did in fact, you know, pass a revised bullying policy, we're just making, wanting to make sure that the handbook that's online, policy manual that's online, reflects all those updated ones, so we are in the process of finding that updated copy to reincorporate. There's some large bug coming. There's no screen, yeah. Whoa, put a saddle on that. There, the, the language that's in the student, that's in the handbook actually does reflect the updated policy language, which leads me to believe that that has happened. There is, however, and I think that this will be taken up by the policy subcommittee, there was an amendment, there was some amended language, and maybe that's what you're thinking about, to the, to the anti-bullying statute, which will, we will need to incorporate into the revised bullying policy.
Right.
And that's what will be discussed at the meeting. Mrs. Burns? Just to, to let you kind of give, I know a lot of these meetings, they were also, part of the discussion was bringing the anti-bullying curriculum into.
This bar is bullying.
Was creating the curriculum to be executed in the schools, you know, to involve students with bullying, and what is and how to be a good friend or student, it was, you know, it was that piece, and then, you know, just expanding upon that, different ideas.
Yeah, absolutely, in fact, in my conversations, as I go through the entry plan process, and have done now four different staff focus groups, one of the things that has come up is, you know, what are we doing for kids around social, emotional learning? I know that second step is a curriculum that has been used at some levels, but, and I think in the past, they've even done some responsive classroom, but I think that there are many staff who are looking for us to kind of take another look at that and determine whether or not we are implementing a, a strong curriculum in that area, and is it cohesive across the grade levels and coherent? So that'll, I think that'll be something that, that I'll look forward to having those discussions with the committee.
Excellent, great, thank you. Did you have anything to add, Mrs. Carroll?
No, sounds great.
Yeah, it sounds good, okay. We have the evaluation team, and so we're into public comments. While we're at public comments, can we say something about? John has been our, our press person from the town crier, and this is John's last night to be our press person, because something wonderful has happened, and he's going to be taking a new job. So we want to wish you well, John, we're very excited for you, and he just received his master's degree recently?
Almost.
Almost, oh, he almost just received it recently.
Yeah, I'm finishing it off, so.
Excellent. So we're wishing you well, and we'll be looking forward, someday he may be, who knows, a screenwriter in Hollywood. Get his picture so it'll happen on file.
There you go.
Excellent, and we really wish you the best, John, we appreciate your, the, how shall I put it? The fair way that you've represented our committee and what's happened, and. and it's, it's been a good time with you.
Thank you.
So we appreciate it, and we hope you have a wonderful time.
Thank you, it's, I'll miss you guys, I'm certainly so.
Come visit, meet in audience.
Yes.
I'm not moving, I'm still living in Wilmington, so.
Oh, okay, so we'll see you, see you around, so thank you so much, and, oh, I just thought of something here, I was going to, oh, I know, I spoke, I happened to go to the, what did I go to last night?
Oh, the soccer.
Thank you. My secretary. No, I happened to go to the soccer game last night, and Mr. Harrison was there, and he told me that it's time again to write the booklet that they do for the athletes, the Hall of Fame booklet, and so he will be coming, he will be sending somewhere, it sounds like a professional person is going to be coming to take a picture of us, so just to warn you, it's, since the person was not here tonight, it will probably be at our next meeting, that he'll be coming to take the picture, and actually, we haven't had a school committee picture with this school committee, so I was thinking we'll ask him to take two, so we can have one that we can all get a picture of, and then he'll use the other one in the book, it'll be in that book.
It's a possibility I may not be here the next meeting.
We can photoshop you in.
Photoshop.
Put your head on a stick, wipe myself one, we could borrow.
I know I have to travel that way, but I'm not sure which day, so.
Oh, and I won't be here the next one, so we'll have to see.
You can photoshop me.
Photoshop, all right, sounds good. And so our next meeting will be September twenty-fourth, and, let me see, and the following meeting will be October eighth, with, Mrs. Bousad will be in charge of that one, that particular, she can't wait.
I know you lucked out.
My only meeting I've ever missed in years, and she's like, don't, are you mad at me? So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Carroll, do you have a second? Mr. Viorc, all those in favor? Good night, everybody, thanks so much.